We do, item number five, 2023, is quick. Move for approval?
I'll say.
Motion is second to approve. There are any additions or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Item number three, is persons wishing to address the board other than the agenda items?
I would like to. Joe Fisher for Pedders Collective Agenda.
We have an agenda item for you.
Yes.
Yep.
I didn't know if they wanted to do that separately or when it gets to that appointment. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Item four is Forest Townes. Five is approval of vouchers.
Move for approval of all the vouchers?
I'll say.
Motion is second to approve the vouchers. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Discussion of passable action on the following is item number six with the bartender's license. We had warned that motion is due. Item seven is Cheryl Sales Corp., change of retail alcohol beverage license agent employee. Drop the whatever for the store fifty-two at ten eleven Post Road, Flover, Wisconsin.
This is just a routine change of agent for the liquor license for the store number fifty-two on Post Road.
Move for approval of the change of license?
Second. Motion is second to approve. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Resolution one dash two dash twenty-three budget amendment, post work banner brackets.
The Public Works Parks Department would like to purchase the brackets to put up flags along the couple of the main different places in town so that we can promote the village a little more. The cost of this is ten thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars plus shipping and handling, which I don't know how much that is, so that's why I put it in as plus shipping at this point in time. We, they have requested that we use some of our alcohol bunch to pay for this transaction if it's a, if you approve of that.
And now I have to, yeah, we've looked at several different designs and brackets and then the banners could come. So this is something we've talked about on multiple occasions and trying to get this week time is a little bit starting to get crunch time so they can get everything private spring, which is a goal to have these up.
I assume we have flags and nine then, or banners?
Yeah, we've been looking at several different designs. Haven't really reached a consensus yet on what those are yet. They keep throwing the company, be throwing out different options to look at. I've not seen any that have been consistent enough where I will present them quite yet. But, but they will go on the poles, the plan is to go on every pole, but then be on the opposite side of the road so they kind of stagger in each direction.
Yes, there'll be seasonal balls, I mean seasonal banners. They're also working out with the vets for the
Home Town Heroes.
Home Town Heroes.
Oh, yeah.
They'll be using some of those as well.
And then there'll be some celebrate closer ones too. Maybe they'll get some money from the foundation for the celebrate closer ones.
Does WPX that allocate for these banners?
They're, they're both, they're our.
They're our polls?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now they're, no, now they're our polls. They were the UT's poll, that's why we couldn't move forward.
It was a pleasure of the board.
I'll move for approval of the request.
I'll say.
Motion is second to approve. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going, those with nay and so will call. Mr. Wolf.
Hi.
Mr. Robbie.
Hi.
Mr. Ballard.
Hi.
Mr. Fritz.
Hi.
Mr. B. Hi. Item number nine is the 2023 agreement of the Aging and Disability Resource Center Forest County Nutrition Program. Pretty standard, it's just a review of that contract.
No changes much?
No.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Item number ten is resolution one dash three dash twenty-three, world migration bird day. For a copy of the new package.
Yeah, I can speak on that briefly. So as a, excuse me, so as a part of the Bird City USA designation, that the village has been a part of for several years now, this resolution is required to kind of identify that the village has a commitment to providing better habitat and putting in place policies that are more bird friendly. So I know as you guys may have seen last year, we did get the high flyer designation, which is the highest designation we can get through Bird City USA. So by passing this, I plan on, we plan on submitting the application for the twenty twenty-two year to get a bird designation. And when that comes out later in the year, the board will give information to the board about where we rank on that.
We've done this now for a handful of years and most, all of the efforts outside of the conservancy area are actually volunteer driven. So there's bird counts, bird boxes, all these things are community members in the village of Flover have done this work that we then recognize as a whole community in a sense. It's been all investment on the village's end, that's really where one of our moving partners is.
Move for approval of the resolution.
I'll say.
Motion is second to approve. Mr. Elsa Roll Call Wolf, those in favor say aye. Mr. Ballard.
Hi.
Mr. Robbie.
Hi.
Mr. Wolf.
Hi.
Mr. Fritz.
Hi.
Mr. B. Hi. Item number eleven is a joint tourism committee member ordinance. I'd like to appoint the president of the village, Ross, on our board and then Josh Patel from the hotel.
Just to add up to that, that this would then be Town of Flover. Chris Brooks is the member from the Town of Flover and Kathleen.
Langley's.
Yes. Wood is the other representative, so the board consists of three village members and two town members.
That's set by. Second. Motion is second to approve. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Item number twelve is recreation, publication of conditional use permit for Joe Fisher and Pedders Collective at nineteen oh one Post Road.
I'll introduce it real quick, Tom, as to why we're here. So this is, through our continued code enforcement efforts at the property addressed nineteen oh one Post Road, which is Pedders Collective. If you guys recall, we had approved a conditional use application of conditions permit for an outdoor display for that business, Pedders Collective. And at that time that we issued that permit, it was identified as a staff report that, you know, at that point, the site was already in non-compliance. So we recommended, recommended a conditional use permit that was a little bit longer than what we traditionally do for properties. Traditionally, for a business, it's thirty percent of the business frontage that we permit outdoor display. And this is, since the building itself is significantly longer, so a compromise for their desire to have a little bit more, we use thirty percent of that entire building frontage, even though they don't need the space of the entire building. Since that time, we've had some significant challenges with the amount of items displayed as well as stored, stored outside. Those two items are handled as the same. And so if you, what was approved was thirty percent of the frontage of the building, nothing on the north side of the building and nothing along the back to be stored outside. We're making up the speed here for a number of years now, to take us back to 2020, that the site has not been able to be maintained in compliance. The property owner has been notified twice, three times in writing of the non-compliance and two citations have been issued. And as of today, we're still in the same kind of state of non-compliance with some significant efforts needed to remove stuff from the site and to come into compliance. I have spoken with the property owner who is in attendance, so I think Joe for coming a number of times. He's obviously been made very aware and clear as to what was permitted and what was allowed. And we're simply not to a point where we're anywhere near compliance. And so per those ordinance, the board does have the ability to revoke the conditional use permit. And in doing so, would not allow for anything to be displayed outside as a permanent business. I am recommending that we go that route. We've had a lot of time here to be working on trying to get compliance and we just simply haven't gotten to that point. And I'm really hoping that we can, by doing this, we can get some cleanup and I would be open to reconsidering this in the future if we get the property back to a state of compliance. But as of right now, I see no reason to have a corporate issue that is not being followed and outside of a few smaller scale efforts to improve stuff along the frontage that's going to storage issue that we have altered the site as if to address. That is my recommendation.
And I'd like to further add to it that this has been ongoing for a considerable time. Even to those two citations that were issued, it came from the police department initially. I'll say that we met with Mr. Fisher here in the building. I recall one time, maybe he missed twice. But Mr. Fisher has always been friendly and cooperative in his intentions, or at least his communication to us, to adhere to the ordinance. And we have seen efforts where things have been moved and progress starting to be made, but then step backs occurring quickly thereafter. We have received complaints from the public and times where it's certainly, in my opinion, where there have been issues of safety even with vehicles on stilts or blocks in the back, open containers, the doors on like refrigerators or some so forth. And so there's been safety concerns as well. All village staff, not just Steve, but all village staff is, that have looked at it from the fire department to the police department, to code enforcement, community development and the administrator's office are in agreement that we have to have a hundred percent compliance and we've not ever even come close to getting there.
Mr. Fisher, do you want to address the group then?
And I don't know how much time we have or whatever, but we did, it was one time that we met and it was a couple of years ago and we have made many improvements since then and we've had fallbacks since then for various reasons. We can get as deep into that as you want. Being said, going forward, this is the first communication I heard from Steve when he called me Monday and I appreciate the call letting me know this was on the agenda. Typically, we've been in contact back and forth, you know, both for positive and negative things, things we've been, you know, making improvements on, things that we've had stuff back on. I mentioned this in the meetings years ago, like I'm a one man show and things, the good comes with me and also the bad and it's hard to keep up a lot of times. But I'm struggling through, as with all our things, a pandemic, record high inflation, ridiculous fuel prices. I have a hard time with staffing. We're playing through, we're trying to make something of this place. When I moved in, it was an abandoned for years with showback that nobody cared about. But when I'm there, everybody cares about my stuff now. So the question I have is if we're going to have issues and discuss the storage thing and the thirty percent and many of these things, I understand, we can apply this across the district because if there's no storage outside, then let's go right now and write to the shareholders that we need to move these semi trailers full of tires that are overflowing that they spill out to the parking lot. Let's talk to the one that's overflowing with rugs at the carpet store. Let's go to the furniture place that during the springtime, the whole front is filled with airbag chairs. If we're going to do this then, I have improvements to make and I would gladly continue to bust my ass to do that. If we are going to enforce these regulations, we will do it for the entire village then. So I'm not the one single, you mentioned several times that you're receiving calls and complaints. How many calls are we receiving that, you know, what am I causing this great distress for? I'm not saying that I want things disorganized. I'm not saying that I don't want to be in compliance to this. I'm saying that we're working hard, we make some improvements, we have some things that fall back. I will continue to work and to get into this compliance. I have no issues with getting to the thirty percent. The north side, the things that are stored, that I will be working, you know, to get off the property. When we see there can be no storage in the back, I guess that would be further discussion because I can go around the village right now and find storage all over, whether that falls into compliance or not. I understand the concerns. When you bring up the thing that was, the van that was on jack stands, it was the next day we took it off the stands. When you brought up the commercial refrigerator that you were worried about a kid being stuck in it, we got rid of that the next day. We are trying to address the main concerns that you have when the overall picture gets addressed as well. It just kind of blows my mind, we're sitting here and maybe just don't know, we just approved spending ten thousand dollars on some brackets for some poles. But yet, I'm trying to drive a business that as of this last year had fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty customers, meaning which from outside of the area to bring them into our area. And when they come to my store, they're bringing other people. They're shopping, they're getting gas at Quick Trip. I recommend the restaurants and also in promoting the village as a whole. So that may not be exactly in compliance and what most people, oh, you see that as messy, you see that as junk, you see that as garbage. I'm trying to explain that it is actually benefits the village and if we can somehow get on the same page with that, I think we could both do a lot of really good things. Yes, this has gone on for a long time and I apologize for that. But building a business takes a long time. Life is messy, building a business is messy and I am working on it. I'm not trying to disregard your conversations, your recommendations, the ordinances. I don't have these things in back to just collect them like, hey, we want a big pile of stuff there. There's a reason behind everything that we do and I can get into those as deep as we want to. I am invested in the store, in the community and doing what I can that's best. Revoking the conditional use permit is not necessarily advantageous to helping that effort. If we want to discuss that in a timeline that we need to set out some dates and say, this is what you need to see by the results file, I'm open to discuss that. Or maybe we want a meeting next week to further discuss that. I am open for that. But to go and say, the last communication I had was June of 2022 and nothing since. And now I hear a phone call that, hey, we're not going to do this anymore, just seemed a little abrupt to me. So if you have questions, I'm willing to answer them. It's just, just I'm going to do my best.
I think the biggest issue for me has, it's been an ongoing issue since day one. And it almost seems that you defy us by just not doing anything. Now there's semi sitting in front of the building. There's been a semi there for at least a week. There are two trucks out there.
Can there not be trucks, can there not be trucks in the, in the parking lot?
Yeah.
There can't be.
There are.
That can't be the case, I can't have my vehicles in the parking lot.
A semi out in the parking lot just seems, I just think is you don't have your room to stick it anyplace else. It's a mess over there. It really is, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Most complaints I get from people is, what are we doing with this? What are we doing with this? What are we doing with this? And we've been trying to get something done and it just not seeming to get done at all. And it makes it absolutely impossible for us to enforce anything anyplace else when they'll turn right around to us and say, hey, look at that place. How can you say that I can't have storage? So you're using the same excuse that we're going to hear from everybody else that we've tried to enforce anything on. So I just, I'm, I'll let you guys make the decision, but I've got no problem with ending the conditional use.
I guess I have a couple of questions, mainly for Steve. Were the citations paid?
I believe they were, yes. I got word that they were.
Yes, from my perspective, like if we revoke the conditional use, the stuff's still going to be out there until, until some work is done, right? And I just don't see how this makes any difference. In my opinion, whether or not the conditional use is there, I feel like it's still going to be a mess unless, you know, it starts taking some action, we start to start taking some action. So, I mean, is there any way we can just up kind of our, you know, site citing? I mean, is that a different route we can go or would we just cite more if these not in compliance or not making progress? I mean, is that something you would prefer? Is if you haven't made progress in a month, all of a sudden you start getting cited on weekly basis or whatever, rather than revoking the conditional use? Because, you know, we revoke the conditional use, I think the stuff's still going to be there unless something changes. And I don't see that that's going to be a change at all. You know, just taking away someone's permit. If you're already advising a permit, I don't see how that's going to force any changes happens. I don't know, do you have any thoughts on that or?
Those are all very valid questions and ones that we've been evaluating with council on our end. And so the ordinance does have the ability to cite daily for non-compliance. And working with the PD, we're just kind of recommending we go down that road. But what we're doing is, what I'm doing and what we're bringing here too is what would be advised from legal council that we've been working with as well. As an next step to show that we're continuing to take progressive, actually, compliance. But that's ultimately what it's been. We've spoke that to Joe as well and he understands that we don't like singling out a business either going after people. But this is a very obvious one and one that we've clearly communicated a number of times, both from the village, myself, making sure the letters of non-compliance, non-compliance, to the PD citations, to our legal council reaching out to both him as well as the former property owner. We've also spoken with the new property owner through the full process. And so we're kind of being advised to show progressive steps. Ultimately, the goal is compliance and that may involve future additional actions outside of the board. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And we have evaluated that, but that's the recommendation that we've been receiving.
Well, and I'll add that it has been, and Joe, you know this as well. We can go back and forth all day long on, on this issue. The village, I know myself, I know Steve, I know the communication that you've received from our attorney. I know the communication that you've received from, I believe, your landlords, landlords, both of them, prior owners and the current owners, that it is crystal clear our expectations and the requirements that have been set for and are us asking, almost begging for compliance. The frustration is, sir, that we just are not seeing that. We do not want, the last option completely on the table is for us to be here tonight under these circumstances and wanting to do this. I don't know the last time the village has even engaged in doing this. But what I do know is that if we don't engage in this, we, the village has no credibility in the eyes of the public because we can't continue to ask and plead with you for compliance. We even have this minimal sign of progress have taken and had conversations of great joy saying, all right, he's doing it, he's doing it, he's doing it, and got very excited by the fact. And then all of a sudden, a week later, we're back in the same boat. And it's a very large sign of disrespect, sir, on your part toward the members of this body that you're not complying with us. That's all we want is your compliance. It would be not a shred of recommendation by any member up here if you could clean that up in five days and have that place looking in compliance like the majority of other businesses. And that's what we've been seeking from the very beginning, almost five years ago, I think.
It's not even close to five years.
Two, since, for two years.
It feels like five years, but no.
It was.
To my point before, and not, is to throw in your face to try and be not compliant. Again, we can get into details of how we make progress one week and it turns around and there's a lot that goes on with that. But we're also not crystal clear on a couple of aspects of it that I had questioned before because yes, I can take the tape measure and we can go thirty percent of the building and we can draw the line and I understand that there's questions on if there can be, Steve's brought it up, nothing on the side of the building. If you're reading and my lawyers read through the ordinances, if there are vehicles that are mine or trailers that are mine or things that were not wrapped around displays per se for sale, that should be based on certain aspects. So we're not crystal clear on some of those things. So yes, some of the things could be easily answered and we can go and we can point that out, but that's not the case with all of those things.
Okay, I have a comment. Sir, our, our job as, as a building board of public safety, and I cannot count the number of times that I've driven by your business and seen a three bottom plow or a hay rake or a piece of industrial machinery that kids are playing on. Our job is to keep. I'm going to get this in. I know what I've seen. I've seen a three bottom plow because I've pulled a lot of them.
I'm not going to allow that. I'm not going to allow that, period. We've got this action, it's on the agenda, we can act on it. We're not going to have a back and forth. That's just not going to happen. The agenda item is there, we can make a motion or whatever you'd like to do on it.
I got one more question if Steve's done.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm gone.
What do you think, I mean, do you have some kind of set goal in mind for the condition the shop needs to be in or to, you know, bring back the conditional use permit?
Yeah, so again, the, the priority pieces are the storage alone, the north side of the building. The one, part of the reason why it can't be stored there, the one, it is very clear that storage is included in the same approval is that is required, there are all required parking stalls for the developing. Current uses of the building may not require the need for those parking stalls based on usage, but that development as a whole has shared parking ground there. And every stall is required to meet the minimum parking stalls for the space of a retail building. So that, nothing can be over there. Semi trailers, even if they're legal to store things, can't be parked where they're parked. It simply cannot. And that was explained as part of the original condition approval. And the stuff along the back of the building, there's the ability to be able to get a public safety vehicle, primarily a fire engine, through there to be able to service the building. And as well as the stuff that is in the grass or in the woods, and this is just stored. There are certain zoning districts in the village that would allow for more freedom and flexibility to store items outside. And those are in more of our industrial districts. I share that information with the owner to encourage, maybe there's a better spot to still be successful here in the village that would allow for some additional storage capability. But where they're primarily located right now is a retail corridor. And those districts are held to a higher standard aesthetically because of how they function and the proximity to other residential vehicles. It's one of the village's, I'll say, three primary current commercial corridors, and so we handle them similarly. So there's certainly some avenues of getting there and those are the two big areas. I think there's, the stuff on the front has been improved. That largely has been in compliance, I'll say, or close to it, to a point where I'm not really concerned with that. It's really, it's, that's just a mass storage of items that we've been very clear on. Can't continue to be brought here and then more and more continues to be brought there. So it's very clear and that's really what it is. It's the north side and the storage along the back that it's not a storage yard, you know, in contractor storage yards or other storage yards that we do approve in industrial divisions, the clear stream, fencing, plantings, et cetera, none of which is existing here or would I recommend being there. So again, the front displaying what they, what they sell, that has not been an issue from our book in the corridor even like that, so.
And we would have to rezone that area if we're going to do any testing.
Right, and I would recommend that that wouldn't be consistent with our feature, with our comprehensive plan or anything. But there are potentially some other areas in the village that if this is the style or how this business would like to operate, that may be more suitable. And again, the village has been very, very workable and we continue to want to be workable to find a solution. Right now, the solution isn't what is present at the property and we've been very clear with that, so.
Here, I'll move to revoke the conditional use permit.
Second. Motion is second to revoke the conditional use permit. Any other questions or comments?
In the event that the satisfaction is done, will we just, do we apply this conditional use or will we have to apply for the conditional use again?
I'll evaluate what procedures we need to do and any advice accordingly. Right now, I'm not entirely certain. My assumption would be we have to go back through the process of revoking it. It runs with the property unless revoked. So if it's revoked, my assumption would be we'd go through the process again, which if we're able to get the compliance to do that, it'll likely be a good thing to go through to make sure everything is very crystal clear. So, and again, I would certainly do want to do that if we achieve that compliance.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those with nay, motion is carried. Item thirteen, the village probably change their substitution construction program?
I have none.
I have none.
In your report.
I believe your report, the report is in your packet. Couple highlights, we still continue to work with the DNR on closing out the Springville Dam. We're working on, some of our staff are working on some of the special gradient calculations that they've been asking for, and I'm anticipating that should be complete sometime around January For the future, utilities are complete and pressure tested. I'm in reviewing the televising data. We did see a few issues, and the contractor has been contacted to resolve those issues, and that's going well. All of that data will be provided to the village as soon as that works complete. The inspection reports are being prepared and be submitted to the developers engineer for preparation of record drawings. I know the village is anxious to get that data into the GIS, and so we're working on trying to get those items closed out. Sanitary design work is approaching the ninety percent, at which time we'll be sitting down with the village staff and making a final review. We've been discussing that project as, as we've been designing it, and our goal is to have an early spring left for that to get the most advantageous pricing possible. That probably touches on my points unless there are any, any other questions for me.
Any questions for Joe? Motion to approve your report. Who gets that energy, Andrew's report?
Second.
Second. Motion is second to approve, are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post with name. Motion is carried. Administrator's update.
Well, I'll start out with just, most of you have heard this already, but for Adam, obviously, the room's done, and pretty proud of how it turned out. I'd really like to make sure all staff, that was fantastic, from Karen, Julia, Pat, Tammy, everybody that contributed to the public works. I think it turned out well, but I would prefer me say most of that already, and yeah, we're pretty proud of it, and hopefully it'll last up till we build another building. So that's, so that's been a highlight. Also, just to update on the tourism a little bit, obviously, you pointed the commission members. We've had great conversation. I spent thirty minutes yesterday with Jim Garvey talking about some future things with the tourism commission. I've talked to Chris Brooks, you know, in great detail. I completed the job description, or at least, I'll say ninety-five percent of it, I sent it over to Chris Brooks for the town's opinion on, on the job description for the executive director. I would anticipate him reaching, adding his, putting his comments in, and we'll get that posted now with the commission being informed. We can have a meeting as soon as possible and get the commission's authority in working forward to get that position filled. And, but very positive, positive remarks from the citizens of both the town and the village about this joint venture, and I think there's a lot of great things that are going to come out of it. Also, highlight a system that started a year ago, a process that started a year ago with our phone system, our very antiquated and outdated phone system today was officially brought online, and now the new system is, is working. So you'll see a different level when you call in, there's a kind of a phone menu. Generationally, you may see happy comments, as Steve pointed out, from the younger generation, and you may see others, because there's a little bit of a phone tree involved in there. So I'm not sure. We have asked, I think the fire department posted a thing on Facebook today about asking the public to be patient, because we got some tweaks to do with the, with the whole, you know, phone tree a little bit. But that's, that's really going to help with efficiency in the office. I think the, the phones seem to ring less today in the main office. Karen, would you agree? Julia?
Yeah.
Which didn't mean less people were calling, it just meant they were getting to the people they needed directly without Pat and Tammy. So I think we've improved efficiency a little bit, or will continue to work toward helping the front office staff do the job a little more efficiently. And other than that, I mean, it's been busy, busy. After we got past the end of the year, it was kind of a slow time, and now things are ramping back up. And Steve, would you like to add something?
Yeah, there's a couple of planning related items that we're working on that should be coming to the board at some point. First is we're pretty much wrapped up, I think, with the fire update to the sewer service area plan for the metro area. No major changes there. Really, the intent was to, what the result of it was, primarily that it really impacted everybody was based on new population data and business growth data, being able to expand the boundaries of the sewer service area so that future development, as we can use your help, that we incorporate events into that plan as the DNR does not allow for properties to be serviced by sewer unless it's identified in that. So nothing major changes out of that, but an update that was, that was good. And secondly, myself, Joe, and potentially my wife and both of us will be meeting with the city and the county tomorrow to talk about a coordinated planning effort for the city's planned extension of Badger Avenue to the south. So just a little bit to the, to the north, the northeast of the intersection of County H H and County H R, owned by Coles. The city could be working on making an extension down and intersecting with County H H. It's a logical thing to work together and how that's going to then tie in, hopefully be a controlled intersection with lights, and then how that fits into the south side, which will eventually be the village of Pulver, for our boundary area with the town, on the Zachcheste Farm that's there. So we're working on that and just making sure that long range, we've got everything incorporated and applied on the coordination.
Just to wrap up then, we do obviously, we'll, we have a closed session, and then some additional comments after closed session. We'll have to come back into open session and conclude my administrator update at that point.
Special business is authorized by law. Seeing on a look for motion to consider innovation, a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, prime C, prime law, prime C, for the purpose considering employment, promotion, compensation for home evaluation data of any public employee with which the governmental body has issued extra exercise responsibility under Wisconsin State Statute one nine point eight five, prime one, prime E, for the purpose of negotiating purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or considering or conducting other specified public business where under competitive regard, the reasons require a closed session.
So, second.